Today is Thursday, March the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Welcome to Woodstock City Council Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty-eight subsection three point three of the municipal act and section sixteen point six point two four of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel, and a recording of the meeting will also be posted on the city's website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings, and minutes page of the city website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of the webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. Welcome. I would ask that all of the councillors turn on their web cameras now. Welcome, everyone. We have quite a full agenda today. We'll be having some presentations with our budgets. And so with that, I would ask, is there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, your worship. I, Councillor Ron Fraser, declare conflicts interest for the closed session of today's agenda, March fourth, in respect to agenda item four dash one, proposed acquisition of land.
Thank you. Any other disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none, disclosure of new business matters arising from the minutes. Then we'll move on with our minutes. And we have three sets of minutes, our regular meeting from February eighteenth, and our two special budget meetings, February twenty-third and twenty-fifth, respectively. Looking for a motion, councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. Move on my staff and send it by councillor Fraser that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on February the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the minutes of the special revenue budget meetings held on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in any of the minutes? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And we have no additions to the agenda or presentations. So we'll start with our delegations, and we have Clyde Glasgow, the Woodstock Cricket Club with us today in regards to department report D one. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. And I had asked for an extension of time. I'd asked the city clerk to to please advise you of that because I noticed it says five minutes, and I asked for about twenty minutes. The reason for this presentation this afternoon is because of the fact that we at the Woodstock Cricket Club, we recently received an email from the Parks Department stating that we would be seen as renter. And the interesting part of that particular email, as I quoted there, I sent you some speaking notes. It says, this is in keeping with our other sports club in the city of Woodstock in space. Well, Woodstock Cricket Club is not like the other sports club. And I'm going to elaborate on that a little later on. The next point there, the members built the clubhouse and prepared the ground. And it's not the city that did that. So what we have is, and what has been happening recently, is a continued saga of insult to the Woodstock Cricket Club. Members of the Caribbean Asian communities, the local black communities of Middlesex, London, and Oxford community, and I'll elaborate on that a little later. The present relationship with parks and recreation is fractured, and you'll notice I've listed a few of them there. Also, what has been happening, there's a misconception on the operation of Woodstock Cricket Club. We are a friendly cultural cricket club with local and international teams. We schedule and play most of our games at Southside Park. For instance, you notice there I mentioned all our twenty twenty games were played at Southside Park. And when we play, we need flexibility for adjustments. And give you a quick example, because I have to be mindful of the time. When we invite cricket teams down to us, especially when they come for Saturday and Sunday, the cricket clubs come as families. They bring their children, the members of the cricket club bring their wives with them. And what we do, we make arrangements for them to attend shirt services, tour Woodstock and surroundings, as the case might be, in order to be there for us for the weekend. And also, the next point that I'm raising there is point F. There's a ninety-nine-year lease. And that has been given to some of the, I've listed some of the older members there, Jack Van, Conrad Joseph, Winston Archer, Andrew Cox, I've listed them there. And we have a contract statement that just expired February twenty-eighth. And the contravention of the statement here on the permitted use says that every attempt will be made not to conflict with the club's use of lands. Every attempt will be made, and I'm going to elaborate on that a little later. Also, point G there quickly, a disregard for the history of cricket in Woodstock. And I mentioned there General George Vanis that there was a strong military presence. The officers formed the Woodstock Cricket Club on the principle that cricket must have its own grounds. And let me elaborate on that quickly. Again, the cricket club started in Inglewood, then it moved to Beattsville and then into Woodstock. And the reason why they kept moving is because they were getting a lot of interference from other sports. And General Vanis that stated, we needed an area, a place where cricket and cricket only can be played. And so I stress that there. Parks and Recreation, a point H on that first page, doesn't have a full understanding of the operation of cricket. For instance, I got a memo from Parks and Rec, and it says here, Clyde, I've received your message from Glynnis. Can you send me what footwear the other group is using and what they need to be using and how the pitch is affected? That there is evidence to show they don't understand the operation of the game of cricket. And still, to let you know, I did send them that information as the case might be. And no oversight, no policing, nothing was done. And so as a result, the surface that we prepared, we put down the cricket pitch there. I mean, I say we are talking about cricketers. Twenty thousand dollar cricket surface in the nineteen seventies continually has been destroyed. So if I go now to talk about fractured relationship there, I talk about the ninety-nine-year lease there. And what has been happening is that Parks and Recs, they continue, okay, to have other people play on the surface there without our permission, as the case might be. We had to cancel practices, cancel games. And when we have teams coming from Toledo, coming from Connecticut, whatever, sometimes we have to, in essence, reimburse these people as a result of the surface not being ready. So what has happened, you notice they have listed, when other people go and play there, they leave garbage, they don't sanitize. We've asked the city to come and sanitize, no. We've asked the city to make sure the other teams sanitize, no. We've called Parks, the workers to come and see the situation. They have picked up garbage there. They have taken pictures of the garbage being left behind by other people. As a result, you notice there we've lost membership because people don't want to come, especially there in twenty twenty, people didn't want to come and play when the facility wasn't clean. Accusations from the neighbors, the neighbors, we've made a deal, speaking here quickly, with neighbors, especially Jim who passed away and who was a councillor and his wife Pat, that Woodstock Cricket Club would not play cricket early in the morning, especially on a Sunday. And what Parks and Rec, what they did, they allowed other people to go there and play early in the morning. The neighbors accused us of breaking that particular deal. I had to go and try to smooth over the situation, let people know that it wasn't our group. They complain, as you notice there, of the loud inappropriate language that was used there, liquor bottles being left around, jumping over the fence. We have rules. If the ball should go over the fence, we have rules how we go to get the balls from the neighborhood. Those people have been jumping over the fence. We've had accusations from the police stating that we violated the COVID violation. I had to point out to Sergeant Westlake when he called me and said to me and accused me, said Woodstock Cricket Club, they're breaking the rules by having large number of people. I had to say to him that, no, it's not our group. It's the other group who comes there. Then you notice there I quoted Sergeant Constable Sir Van Parris. He was the one that advised me that maybe what I should do is to go to the courts and get an injunction, as the case might be. I sent you a copy of that thing that I sent to him, and then I also passed that on to Chief Longward. And eventually, after speaking with Constable Van Parris, he said to me, Clyde, by the time you folks get a settlement from the court, it's going to be years. Wait until the present contract expires and then enter into discussion with Parks and Rec. Now, costly repairs to the playing surface have enclosed just two pictures there for you to see. And I just did a quick accounting, and it's eighteen one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars we spent last year to repair the cricket surface so that it can be playable. We had a conflict with a Little League baseball team on a Thursday. Normally, Thursday is our prime day, and then we practice Tuesday, Wednesday, if there's rain, whatever, that flexibility talked about. And that was so embarrassing, eventually, when we called the police, the police officer who came and also was a member of the Parks and Rec used that statement there, very inflammatory. You people complain too much, and you think you're always right. And I spoke to Parks and Rec about that. They were told that, oh, he's a police officer, have nothing to do with it. But the thing about it, as a retired school principal, I was dismayed because of the fact that I knew some of those parents there that had brought their kids to play baseball. And there was that confrontation. I was so embarrassed about that. Eventually, we relented and we let the little kids play. Now, as I mentioned earlier, as you see, the history of the club being built by the soldiers and then moved and so on, and the base and the principle that cricket must have an absolute grounds. And the first game played in eighteen forty, the ground was greated, the trees removed by the members of the cricket club. And the pitch prepared by the members and not by the city. And in nineteen seventy, when we put down that wicked there, that pitch, it cost us twenty thousand dollars. And that's when the ninety-nine-year lease was given to cricket and cricket only. And when you look at our history, it's always been a situation where we've been told, be careful of interference, be careful of encroachment. Always be careful of that. And that's the kind of thing that has happened. And that brings me right into the next phase part, David says. City staff entering without prior notification, they've gone into the building, they've changed the locks, made adjustments to the building, they've used the hydro without our permission because we paid the hydro every month. They utilize food stuff. One Thursday afternoon, coming from work from the Ministry of Education, I pulled in, saw a couple of city staff sitting, drinking Coke. And the interesting thing about it, oh, Clyde, there's only two Coke. But the point was, it's not just only two Coke. The point is, is that you went into the refrigerator without permission, and you went and you used and stuff. And that's the piece about the encroachment. And the same thing with the hydro. I'd gone in there one Thursday afternoon to set up for practice, we saw that the hydro connection was made through the kitchen. And when the kitchen window was left open and the wires went all the way across over to the baseball area. And it was in there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then the Monday morning, I had to go back after getting advice to tell the Parks and Rec Department to remove that because basically taking the hydro without permission is theft. And they have gone into the building and made adjustments to the building and removed our documents, equipment, and took them over to the baseball area, left them exposed for baseball people to see our documents. We lost the equipment. I brought that to Brian's attention. And and there are times when the building was left opened, okay, and as I said, equipment went missing. In terms of the next point, a lack of respect, poor communication, and communication was inflammatory. For instance, the one incident, September the nineteenth, when I met with Brian, Brian turned to me and said to me, Clyde, you'll have to get along with the other people. But I said, it's a violation of the contract. And I pointed out to him, how can you get along with people when they are just not playing or not using the facilities the way that we used to use it? And just to give you a quick insight on that, when Bobby McFarland was managing Parks and Rec, Bob would call me. If somebody want to use the facility, call me. Clyde, so and so would like to use the facility. And I say to him, okay, fine, then call me. And then I would tell them, look, we're gonna be there, we're gonna watch you, we need such footwear. And we have respect for our neighbors, watch the language, no drinking of alcohol. And we lay out the rules very clearly with them. And then we say, do you understand that? Yes. And then I make them sign. And then I told them, we're going to be present, we're gonna have a member present. And in the event, if you violate, you contravene any of the concerns, then we have the right to stop you playing. Very quickly moving over to the next bit of cricket forms in Ontario, there are different types of club, private clubs, like Sarnia, Branford, Woodstock, and St. Paul's Club Police and so on. For these particular clubs here, anybody who wants to play, they must contact us, not the city, to get permission. Personal, and I mentioned one, Barrettson Club, just outside of Kitchener, you have to get the true Barrett. Public parks are the parks run by the city and what's not. And these are the ones where people go and pay and rent and do whatever they want, and the city must police it. Ladies and gentlemen, we transcend geography and culture. We've always cooperated with the city for a number of years. Doc Show, July first, May twenty-fourth festivals, I mentioned there. We've received very good support from the city. For instance, we go to St. Vincent, we go to Jamaica, we go to Florida. And anytime we go, and Ann Ash is always willing to give me city pins so that we can trade with the other people. One, I put on cows there because one year she gave me some cows, and it was a hit.
Dr. Glasgow, you'll need to wrap things up. We've run out of time.
All right, okay. Can I? Okay, I was just gonna get over to the, all right. Can I get over to the resolution then? You notice here on the resolution, as I said, we need the administration of the cricket club to be back in the hands of Woodstock Cricket Club. We build a facility, we prepared it, whatever. Parks and Rec don't have an understanding how our club from our cricket function, and especially the question of a private, we are a private cricket club. And therefore, so what we want is to go back to the good old days whereby if somebody wants to rent the facility, you come through us. And then renegotiate with that, with those people, as the case might be, and not to have the constant conflict that we're having, where we have to call the police. And we've called the police eight times during the season, as the case might be there. And so that's, so finally, in ten seconds. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to pay you to picture yourself. You've built a building, and you've prepared a surface. And you paid the money, everything, and then all of a sudden, you're told you're going to be a renter. Here in the democratic society in the twenty-first century, something that you have built and cherish, you're going to be a renter. And so that's our contention. Our contention is that we want the administration of Woodstock Cricket Club to be returned to Woodstock Cricket Club. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry that I went over.
Thank you. Questions of council? Thank you very much, and we'll deal with that item when we get to the staff report later. And we have our next delegation. We have members of the Woodstock Environment Advisory Committee regarding their budget and a proposed climate emergency bylaw. And we're joined by Chris Kennedy. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, we'll get right to it. I'm gonna share a screen of the report that we made to council, just so everyone can be looking at the same thing. My screen is open here. Nope, that's not the one, sorry. Sorry, bear with me. There we go. Okay, so I guess I'd like to start by just thanking you for your continued support of WEAU through the years. Bit of a, kind of a long report, so I'm just gonna skim some of that, just in the interest of saving your guys' time. But to Mayor and members of the council and everyone else who supports us, Amy included, everybody, thank you. The aim of this is just to update council on what's been going on. Typically, this year-end report will be, hey, what did we do in this past year? Of course, given the year, that's not very much this time. So brief background, just to reiterate, we've been here since nineteen ninety. Typical role is to advise council. We also do quite a bit of public relations for new initiatives done by the city. So that's that. Because of the COVID pandemic, our twenty-two was pretty limited. We did try to arrange a provincial environmental advisory committee symposium, but we had to cancel it based on the conditions everyone is in. So moving forward, one of our recommendations this year is going to be a declaration of a climate change emergency, but so rather than a declaration, we're hoping to have some action items to monitor annually to be able to report back to the citizens. And just kind of confirm that we are doing what we say we're gonna do. So in doing that, as the environmental landscape continues to shift, we have alongside with the city must pivot to better focus and reflect the current environmental concerns that are coming and will continue to demand consideration, all aspects of municipal planning. In twenty-six, Canada's climate changing report illustrated the stark future for cities in Canada. The County of Oxford, including the three members of council, Woodstock Council, who voted with it, has joined the list of six hundred and fifty governments around the world in recognizing that climate change is a fair and present danger to our community and the world. So in our response to date, the city and the county have continued to recognize the importance of climate change, and there certainly have been initiatives that have already been put in place that are to be commended by the city. And the Oxford County has developed a one hundred percent renewable energy plan. And the city, in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, developed the Woodstock Community Energy Plan, which had some ambitious goals and set some background numbers that we can relate to in future years and report back on. Since that time, to my knowledge, not much has been done to work on the recommendations of those. But it is a guidance document that's already there that we came up to moving forward and have reportable numbers to advise the city on. Included in that report was a commitment to reduce our total energy use and sort of coincidentally reduce our GHG emissions use. And there are numbers included. I guess what it probably sounds like is we're doing this solely because of environmental reasons, but truly, the business case is very strong also. Right now, we're playing a sort of a percentage of a cent per liter on natural gas and petroleum. Huge expense for the city, but by twenty thirty, that's gonna be in the neighborhood of twenty-five cents a liter for petroleum and much increased in natural gas. I feel like this declaration with sort of binding regulation in it will help us to stay progressive, as we've tried to be in the past, and also save a lot of money for future generations. Kind of a, sort of like what Indwell did, there's a little bit of initial investment cost, but there were utilities moving forward are gonna be much reduced to the benefit of everybody behind us. And for us to enjoy for a couple of years, hopefully. So with that sort of brief overview of that, in conclusion, the members of WEAU recognize the steps undertaken by the city already, have been further recognized, the need to substantiate our continued commitment to climate change and the previously declared climate emergency. We officially recognizes the immediate and future risks posed by issues surrounding climate change and seeks to have a formative stance on bringing issues to the forefront of municipal decision-making by continually challenging ourselves and Woodstock community to strive for better. So we've made some recommendations here. But in the interest of better informing council, we are going to make another presentation with the actual declaration involved, and we're just hoping to get your and staff's input before we come to council with something that's not agreeable to yourself, that is still effective. So that's to come shortly. That's basically that. So it's kind of a big long-term ask, but to the mutual benefit of all citizens of Woodstock.
Thank you. Questions of council? All right, seeing none. All right, seeing none, uh, we'll move.
Like Mark might hope.
Oh, good, okay, councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks a lot, worship the mayor to Chris Kennedy or our past chair that was the environment advisory committee. I do wanna say that, cause at least Gabrielle is the new chair and it is quite a great working committee, I know Chris has been with them for a number of years and. As a member of council, I was lucky enough to join him just over two years ago, but this terminology, climate emergency, Chris, I mean, you talked about. Everything except use the exact term climate emergency, a lot of communities and even in Southern Ontario, Kitchener, London, St. Thomas and whatnot have. Sort of joined forces to create a climate emergency in the county of Oxford does lots of. Where do you think that the whole terminology places itself into into the general thinking of the of the day in, day out to consumer? As far as trying to improve our climate in the in the. Well, you know, we're talking about the climate emergency side of things.
It's, it can be kind of a tough thing to consider, right? Taxes are already high, do we wanna do any more initiatives than we already have? Uh, anything that's gonna cost anything right now uh, might be a tough sell. But I think uh, sorry, to broadly go to the International Panel on Climate Change, that we have twelve years to fix things before it's sort of irreversible. Uh, so I guess the term emergency is quite applicable because uh, it's sort of a short term thing that needs to be enacted now. Uh, I guess, you know. We're gonna see increased weather shifts, there's gonna be increased costs of the city for uh. Uh, maintenance, stormwater, um, dealing with that. A lot of increased costs that are gonna be borne by each citizen and also the community as a whole, so. Any initiatives we do now to reduce our um, both natural gas or petroleum uh inputs. Is is just gonna help in the long run, so um. For people who think more dollars and cents than uh, you know, future impacts, there's still a good business case to do this as well as. Just kind of preserving the environment for our kids and grandkids and future generations.
Great, thank you. Further questions? I don't see anyone, okay. So we'll move along, we will do the uh, consideration of delegations. And so we don't need one on our first presentation, but we'll need one here on uh, receiving the Environment Advisory Committee. Uh, we'll go with councillor Agioni.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I move on myself, the Woodstock City Council received the annual report and presentation. From the Woodstock Environment Advisory Committee as information.
Thank you, and a seconder councillor Schattenberg, you've heard the motion discussion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And uh, now we'll move along to uh, correspondence. And our first item is the resolution from the town of Tilsenberg regarding the restructuring of Oxford County Council. And uh. Would like to make a motion on that one. I'm freezing up a little bit here on my end. Okay, councillor Talbot?
Thank you, worship, move on myself, that this uh, Woodstock City Council received resolution twenty twenty one zero nine zero from the town of Tilsenberg. Regarding a restructuring of Oxford County Council as information.
Thank you, and a seconder? Councillor Tate, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next item is the request to support the reduction of the speed limit. On uh, and sitter to have north, uh, just south of the roundabout. Looking for a mover on that one, councillor Lauder?
Thank you, I'll move that Woodstock City Council advised Oxford County Council that the um. City support the petition received from Thomas Donnelly. Requesting the speed limit on County Road fifty nine between Devonshire Road and the traffic circle. At Oxford Road seventeen be reduced to fifty kilometers per hour.
Thank you, and a seconder on that one? Councillor Fraser, discussion? Councillor Lauder?
Um, this um, Mr. Donnelly had come to me about this and he was just asking for the city to support, he's already sent this. Uh, to the county too, it'll be coming on their agenda, but um. That it is the feeling of a lot of people in the area about the speed. Um, that some of the traffic goes and there's a lot of, it's very built up now with a lot of families, young people. Uh, crossing at Lakeview to go to the David Graham Park. And also, um, a lot of people are walking along that area. So if the county um could see their way um to checking that speed out, and I know I've spoken to the police. Uh, the police chief and he also is um having the speed um checked in that area, so it's just um. Just a request for the city to support this resolute, this uh, petition that he has sent forward.
Thank you, further discussion? Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, thanks a lot, the further what Connie Lauder has already stated, I think the city of Woodstock could be using the Cowan Sportsplex more and more for. For various indoor and outdoor activities, everything from uh, even blood donors clinics and stuff like that in the near future. But there's getting more and more activity in that area and it's a, it's a very good idea to keep it tabs, not only for residential purposes, but. Other purposes in that in that area and let's hope, fingers crossed, that there be some sort of a minor soccer season this year as well for the outdoor. Playing, and of course, minor football as well.
Thank you, further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And moving right along, we have our staff presentations and our first one today, we are joined by Ken Whiteford. The Chair of the Woodstock Police Services Board, along with the Chief of Police, Daryl Longworth. Uh, for the twenty twenty one budget presentation, welcome.
Good afternoon and thank you, Mr. Mayor, the um. I think we can all agree that um. Twenty twenty was a rather bizarre year and continues to be a bizarre time as we move into twenty twenty one. The um, the past year for your police force or service has been uh. Bit of a challenge on a number of fronts, we have made progress, uh. That will be outlined in a few minutes by the chief as uh, he speaks to the budget. But I would like to at this point recognize the personnel of the police services, both civilian and uh. Sworn for the, the way in which they've recognized and responded to the concerns that have been raised. By this pandemic and also by um. Challenges that we faced on the IT security front over the course of twenty twenty. As far as the police service board itself is concerned, we've, we've also experienced change there. Members of council be aware that uh. In June of last year, Leslie Farrell joined the board uh. As uh, filling the vacancy created by the departure of Mary Anne Silverthorne, who was our. Our Chair of of the Board at that time. That that particular change uh. Necessitated an election of a chair and is again council probably aware, the mayor. Uh, accepted that position and served in that position until early uh, January of this year. The other members of the board are councillor Tate and uh, Bo and Ry. Now I've mentioned Mary Anne Silverthorne. And I want to take this opportunity to say a few, few words about Mary Anne's contribution. To police governance in this city. And also at the uh, at higher levels. We can trace her involvement with police governance all the way back to uh. Two thousand four, when she began a five year term. As part of the former board of the uh, Oxford Community Police Service. Uh, there was a break in in her involvement and then she was appointed by the province. In two thousand twelve to the um. Woodstock Police Service Board. And she immediately started to climb the ladder of the associations involved with policing. Uh, spent seven years as Chair of the Zone that uh. That our particular um, association is divided into zones across the province and she. She chaired that that zone covering Woodstock for seven years. Moved on to the Director of the Ontario Police Service Board Association. Spent four years in that capacity. And then moved on again. To the um. Canadian Association of Police Governance. And culminated her service with a four year term as President of the Canadian Association. And I think we can all agree that that's a pretty significant uh, achievement. Considering that the um. Canadian Association represents uh. All police services across the country, Halifax to Vancouver. Uh, I think Woodstock was certainly punching above its weight to have somebody representing them. Uh, at that level uh, for a period of time of four years. So I wanted just to to point this out to council, to spotlight Mary Anne's achievements. And to publicly thank her for what she's accomplished over the, over the years. And um. Again, to um, to to have her recognized by both the board and uh. And people that may be um, watching this council meeting. Now, without further ado, I wanna turn to the police budgeting. Uh, Chief Longworth is is here and uh. I'm going to ask him to um. Detail the and summarize the budget and explain uh. Exactly where we're going to move in terms of our strategic plan that we put in place just recently. And how we're going to pursue that over the course of twenty twenty one and years beyond. And uh, with that, over to the chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would certainly echo the acknowledgements and uh. Commendations for Ms. Silverthorne's uh, contributions over the past number of years. Uh, with the mayor's position or permission, I will uh, start and share my screen with the rest of yous. Just a simple thumbs up, everybody can hear me okay and see my screen?
We've got you.
So good afternoon again, uh, it is my pleasure on behalf of the Woodstock Police Services Board and the dedicated members who make up the Woodstock Police Service to present our twenty twenty one budget proposal. Before I do that, uh, before we look ahead to twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, I think it would be important to reflect on the budget performance in twenty twenty. Our twenty twenty budget saw a one hundred and eighty thousand dollar shortfall in revenue directly related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And nearly one hundred thousand dollars in additional expenses directly related to the pandemic. That went towards the purchase of personal protection equipment. Renovations and furniture purchases to ensure barriers and physical distancing in the building. Extra cleaning and purchase of extra cleaning supplies, all designed to keep our members and the public safe while still providing quality service. Because of this two hundred and eighty thousand dollar shortfall, we had to defer some purchases and delay some hiring in order to soften the impacts on our twenty twenty budget. In order to come out with a balanced budget at the end of the year, and we were successful in doing that. Now, looking ahead to the twenty twenty one budget. In consultation with the community and our members, our strategic plan has identified a number of strategic priorities that we've committed to. The first priority is to improve community safety. And there are a number of goals and targets that fall under that priority, including making our roads safer, enhancing drug enforcement, improving outcomes for victims. And a greater focus on the downtown. Our second priority relates to creating better collaboration and engagement with the community. Uh, through improving our external communications, working with and mobilizing the community. And better engaging with our community partners, our diverse communities, youth, elderly and vulnerable populations. And finally, the third priority, enhancing organizational excellence. By leveraging technology to make more efficient use of our resources. By looking after our members' mental and physical wellness and enhancing our performance management and career development. This budget has been designed to ensure that we continue to be well positioned to address these prior priorities now and in the future. We continue to see a growth in calls for service. And even though we experienced a decline in calls for service for about a two to three month period during the initial stages of the pandemic. We still saw a slight increase in the calls overall, over nineteen, twenty nineteen. So although you can see that the rate of increase appears to have slowed in twenty twenty. It's still an increase in workload and still represents a thirty two percent increase in the number of calls we've received over the past five years. And what type of calls are we seeing the most significant increases in? Well, the number of nine one one calls into our dispatch center continues to rise at an exponential rate. The number of weapons related calls has risen considerably in the past year. Calls for service related to suspicious persons, unwanted persons and trespassing. They've all increased dramatically and although not high profile calls, they all require at least one and often two officers to attend, fully investigate, resolve. And then complete the necessary paperwork before moving on. On a positive note, mental health related calls were down for the first time in seven years, which although it's just one year of data. Um, and I'm cautious on relying on one year of data, it may be indicative that we are seeing some positive comes from the use of our M R teams. Our Health I Am software and ongoing mental health training. We also saw a decrease in the number of assaults and property related crimes, your thefts, break in enters, robberies and shoplifting. In both the downtown core and the city as a whole. However, again, it's only one year of data and I'm not putting too much value on those numbers as I really think COVID. May have had an impact as stores were closed, people were home more often and therefore eliminating the opportunity to commit some of those crimes. So we know the population is growing and will continue to grow with estimates placing the city of Woodstock's population over fifty thousand by twenty twenty five. And you can see that the population, the blue line on the graph, continues to increase at a similar rate as our calls for service, which is the red line. The green line represents the linear path that our calls for service is taking as we proceed into twenty twenty one. So to answer the question, are we well positioned to address our three strategic priorities now? The answer is yes. We increased staffing by eight sworn officers over the past eighteen months. That allowed us to provide two dedicated full time patrol officers downtown. A full time dedicated traffic officer. One additional officer dedicated to drug investigations. And the creation of a community response unit to proactively target hotspot crime locations, issues downtown and track traffic initiatives. I told you last year when I presented that although there were, there was a significant investment in twenty twenty, there would be some additional growth required in twenty twenty one. But that that growth would be more measured. The increases in staffing in twenty twenty established a solid and much needed base from which to grow. But we need to continue to build on that base and increase staffing levels and technology. To keep pace with the growing community and increasing workload into the future. What are the impacts affecting the twenty twenty one budget? Reduction in revenues are still anticipated in twenty twenty one related to the pandemic, and that's been accounted for in this budget. Leveraging technology. Continuing to add very expensive human resources is simply not sustainable. We must continue to expand our technological abilities so that we can work smarter. And make more efficient uses of the valuable resources that we are deploying on a daily basis. This budget will allow us to do that through continued investment in digital evidence management. Which will diminish time officers spend handling and redacting the volumes of digital evidence we receive on a daily basis. In preparation for court and make use of cloud based technology to provide seamless disclosure of that digital evidence to the courts. And eliminate the need for costly and time consuming processes of redaction, burning images to discs and other storage devices. Improvements to our computer aided dispatch system and business analytics programming. In an earlier slide, I mentioned the increasing workload in our nine one one communication center. The enhancements we plan to make to our phone system and computer aided dispatch through this budget. Will diminish workload in our communicators, on our communicators. And put more information at the fingertips of our officers in the field through their mobile terminals and handheld devices. The continued investment in our business analytics software will also allow us to leverage data to set priorities. The continued investment in our business analytics software will also allow us to leverage data to set priorities, develop policies. And assist in decision-making to make sure we're making the best use of those valuable resources. And putting our officers where they need to be, when they need to be there. Next generation nine one one or NG nine one one is an initiative aimed at updating the nine one one services across North America. To improve public emergency communication services in an increasingly wireless mobile society. Significant investments were made towards NG nine one one in twenty twenty. But more will be required in both twenty one and twenty two to meet the regulated standards for primary nine one one answering centers like the one we have here in Woodstock. That will come into a force in twenty twenty three. And although this one may not exactly fit under the technology bullet. I do want to point out that we are going green with the rollout in twenty twenty one of hybrid frontline patrol vehicles to reduce our carbon footprint. And reduce future fuel costs. Other impacts affecting the budget. Obviously contractual salary increases. And when you consider that about ninety percent of our budget goes towards human resources, this is a significant driver. As is increasing our staffing levels and increased benefit and WSIB costs. This budget will make significant investments in our staffing levels in twenty twenty one. It will allow us to hire two additional officers. One for frontline prior to response and one as part of our commitment to enhancing our services to. Victims of domestic violence and human trafficking. One additional civilian will allow us to fill a position that's been vacant for nearly two years due to a long-term illness has resulted in overtime. And added workload on the other civilian employees, it's just no longer sustainable. And it will allow for a full-time digital forensics analyst, which is presently just a part-time position. Nearly every investigation we now handle involves a video, a cellphone or a computer that needs to be analyzed. And we've been monitoring the workload on this position over the past two years. The workload associated to the growth and the number of electronic devices that need to be analyzed for investigations is at the point that this needs to be a full-time position to keep up. And meet our court disclosure obligations. The proposed budget will allow us to make significant improvements in twenty twenty one. By adding an additional frontline officer combined with the restructuring that we will be undertaking in twenty twenty one. With the creation of our community response unit and changes to how we deploy our K nine unit. Will allow us to have additional resources assigned to traffic enforcement. And that's in addition to the full-time traffic member added in twenty twenty. Strategic targeted enforcement throughout the city. And additional patrols and enforcement efforts downtown. And that's in addition to the two foot patrol officers already assigned there. The creation of a special victims unit to provide enhanced victim-focused delivery of services to combat human trafficking, domestic violence and sexual violence. And I've already touched on the increased technology improvements and the impact they will have on the workload in our dispatch center. And on our ability to efficiently deploy our people. This investment is a critical step to ensure we are well positioned. To meet the safety needs of our diverse, vibrant and growing community and provide effective and efficient policing into the future. So our projected net operating budget for twenty twenty one is sixteen million nine hundred eighty one thousand six hundred twenty six dollars. This is a total increase of four point four eight percent of twenty twenty. This is a large increase, there's no way to sugarcoat it and I'm not going to try. However, this city is growing and your police service needs to grow with it in order to continue to provide effective and efficient policing now and into the future. And just before I close and answer questions, I would like to acknowledge the members of the Woodstock Police Service who are out there right now as I'm speaking, answering nine one one calls. Dealing with people in need, people in crisis and responding to emergencies. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, chief. Questions of council? Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, worship and through the chief. Just going back to your. Your calls for service for suspicious persons and unwanted persons. Do you think any of that is related to that increase is related to? Drug addictions and our homeless that we're dealing with on a constant basis?
It certainly could be. I think some of it has to do with the pandemic as well with businesses being closed and people being at home maybe noticing more suspicious activity in their in their neighborhoods as well. Certainly, when I talk about those stats, when I, we've, we've actually looked at the ones downtown as well. And the number of suspicious persons calls downtown has increased like they have across the city, so I think. Probably a combination of what you just pointed out about homelessness and drug addiction factored with the fact there's a lot more people at home paying attention as well.
If I can continue your worship just briefly. And I just want to. Congratulate your community response unit. Obviously, the feedback I'm getting from the business improvement area is that there's impact. Because of that. And I think also is it the I heart unit to your mental health unit?
M heart, yes.
Yeah, M heart, I was close. I think it said a significant impact obviously because your recalls for mental health. Calls obviously reduced. You answered my one question I already had formulated anyways on the enhanced nine one one. My understanding there, there was some of that was coming down the tubes, so it's nice to know you're preparing for that. And I suppose the only other question I have is. Your digital forensic analyst. Is that a sworn officer position or a civilian position?
That's a special constable position, so it is a special, it is a civilian position, but as you know. The special constable has some enhanced authorities, so we swear them in as a special constable, even though it's still considered a civilian position.
And. That's about it, other than congratulating you and. All your senior staff and officers for doing a good job this year, it's been a stressful year, you've had a lot of. High-profile cases to deal with and they all, all that everybody should be congratulated on the job they've done.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Counselor Schadenberg?
Yeah, thanks a lot to our police chief for this past weekend, there was a press release issue where there was, I guess, thirty one cases, maybe that number has grown of. I guess we'll call it vandalism to personal property around the city of Woodstock and one particular neighborhood. But give us an idea just for general public who might be watching this, how many man-hours or person-hours goes into. An investigation like that when you have that many cases to sort of. Get on file.
That'd be hard to guess, I know I've been part of analyses of investigations in the past and sent a certain. Even a small, I don't want to minimize it, but a threatening case involving one person, a threatening another person. When we looked at that, when I was with a previous police service, it was over four hundred hours. And because, and I, as I touched on with the digital forensics, because it involves cell phones and the texting going back and forth. It took that that amount of time, plus the investigation, plus getting statements, plus the arrest, the paperwork, the follow-through on the the paperwork for courts. So although it's not a specific answer to your question. I would suggest. An investigation like the one we had over the weekend, probably tied up an officer for the better part of a full shift, a full twelve-hour shift and then some. Just taking the initial information. That investigation has been passed on to our community response unit and I know they've been. Analyzing some things, they've been going around gathering video from different houses, so that all takes time and that all has to be imported. And that's where the the digital evidence management piece comes in. And as well the follow-through, we have received some information from the public and if I can use this platform to ask for any more help. That we can get from the public, somebody out there knows who this person is and and we rely on the public's feedback as well, so it's answering the calls. In our dispatch center at the front desk, so I was, I would suggest that a case like this. Would be in the hundreds of hours as well when you add it all up.
Thank you, Counselor Accioni.
And thank you, your worship, through to the chief, most of my answers were actually answered there from the other counselors, so. Let me just kind of say a big thank you, I know you're in a, let's call it a no-win situation anytime. We go through a pandemic and everything else, the city has gone through this last, let's call it eighteen months now with the. Computer hack and everything else we've gone through, it's just been unbelievably, so I just, I really want to say thank you. I know we we are growing city, I certainly agree that of course we have to grow our police force. If we like it or not, it's just a natural growth and just want to say we really appreciate you and your staff. Doing what they can, keep the increases as minimal as possible. But of course, knowing that we have no choice but to add people and.
Right, I will pass that along, I have a big, I have a big team, a very talented team behind me, so I'll pass that along, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much, chief. And we'll continue moving right along, our next. Presentation is our Woodstock Art Gallery. And today we are joined by our director and curator. Mary Reed as well as Lynn Moyer, our chair of the board. And again, the twenty twenty one budget presentation, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, your worship, Mayor Birch, City Council and members of the audience. My name is Lynn Moyer and I am the chair of the Woodstock Art Gallery's Advisory Board. Along with Mary Reed, Weg Director Curator, we will be presenting the gallery's twenty twenty operations year in review. And the Wags plans for moving forward into twenty twenty one and beyond. As for many organizations, twenty twenty was a difficult year. Yet there were some silver linings which I delighted to share with you. I would like to first start with acknowledging some changes to the WAG Board's membership. As you can see, I'm the newly elected board chair. Judy Dent has now moved into the position of past chair. And on behalf of the gallery board and staff. We would like to acknowledge her service, dedication and passion for the Woodstock Art Gallery. I would like to extend my appreciation to the entire board for embracing virtual meetings early on. An unexpected positive outcome of moving our meetings to an online format. Was that it offered greater transparency to the citizens of Woodstock regarding the important work we do. During twenty twenty, the advisory board undertook the development of two significant policies. One on finance, which has helped the organization streamline its reporting processes. And one on board recruitment and orientation process, which proved to be quite fruitful. We are pleased to welcome artist and designer Asma Kanani. And Magnus Troitska, Chair of the Department of Linguistics and Languages at the Master University to our ranks. Their individual perspectives and expertise will be a much-needed asset to the gallery's future growth. As we move into our strategic planning for the next five years. And although we were a bit delayed due to the pandemic, we moved forward with the development of the gallery's twenty twenty one. To twenty twenty six strategic plan. We have engaged the services of a well-respected consultant, Catherine Moats, who I believe some of you have already spoken with. We expect to present a high-level overview of the gallery's new strategic plan to council in early fall. As you all know, there was an additional contribution of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from the estate of Bruce Flowers. To the Woodstock Art Gallery Investment Fund. The establishment of this fund was made possible due to the initial generous donation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Bruce Flowers estate. Now totaling three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, this investment fund will be held in perpetuity. And will assist in planned giving and other donating strategies. The intent is to grow the capital of this fund so that the proceeds from the investments. Will further the long-term sustainability of the Woodstock Art Gallery. The earnings made from the investments will be directed towards the education. And exhibition programs offered by the art gallery and towards art acquisitions for the permanent collection. We have recently received the final transfer of sixty one thousand dollars from the estate. Which will be directed towards the commissioning of a figurative public art sculpture project. To fulfill Bruce's wishes. It is intended this new addition to the city of Woodstock's art scape will be unveiled in twenty twenty two. Thank you for your time and attention. I will now turn it over to Mary Reed, the gallery's director curator. Who go into more detail regarding twenty twenties achievements and the plans for twenty twenty one.
Thanks very much, Lynn. I'm going to share with you now an overview of the gallery's operation over the last year. Twenty twenty started like every other year with the launch of our winter program, starting on the family day weekend. And on Saturday, February the fifteenth, we held another jam-packed exhibition opening. This was very followed quickly by our Family Fun Creative Day on Monday, February the seventeenth. And I'm delighted that we presented this program in partnership with the museum, the theater, aquatics and recreation. And last year it was generously sponsored by the Kingsman Group. One element that people don't realize is the number of youth employment opportunities we provide for our local bright lights. All of these positions are funded through youth employment grant programs through the government of Ontario and Canada. And in the past year, we've employed four students and engaged two co-op students. To provide a meaningful experience that aids these young people in developing their leadership, problem-solving and communication skills. One accomplishment of note is the gallery's accessibility guide that provides best practices and goals of improving accessibility in all of the gallery's operations and programs. This important resource was developed by our Assistant Curator of Education intern Connor McKinnon and was done in concert with our education team. This is a snapshot of the education activities the gallery undertook in twenty twenty. These include a wide range of activities from children to seniors. Many of these programs are offered at a cost-recovery basis and are underwritten by local businesses and funders. The gallery also fulfills the Ontario curriculum requirement by offering programs to our local public, Catholic. Private school, the school boards as well as our homeschoolers. And several of these programs got underway very early in twenty twenty and then we all know what happened. Due to COVID, we've been made the very bold virtual pivot. We transferred our physical exhibitions into virtual exhibitions, we hosted two art auctions and split the proceeds with local artists and artisans. We overhauled our website to make as many activities from membership to donating online as possible. We moved ahead with our annual juried exhibition, Visual Element sixty two. And due to being closed, we could not mount the exhibition in flesh, so what we did for the first time is we did it entirely virtually. From jurying to the actual display and something remarkable happened. We actually went viral and not viral in terms of social media land stats, but for the art gallery, this was certainly huge. As evident, our People's Choice Award winner received over four thousand votes. And as you can see in this slide regarding Facebook, which is our primary social media tool, the uptick in engagement we are receiving on this new virtual platform is significant. I should mention that engagement does not mean a quick view, it means that someone opened up a link, did an action such as liked, shared or voted. And the silver lining in all of this is that the Woodstock Art Gallery is now attracting a whole new audience. The biggest impact has been on the work of the gallery's extraordinary education team. They have done the bulk of heavy lifting in this new digital programming platform. Two accomplishments of note, and there are certainly many others, is the creation of an entire education package. Complete with behind-the-scenes virtual exhibition and vault tour and a Google Drive chock full of resources, activities and tests geared to grades one through eight. As well as the development of a public virtual resources page with activities for all ages and abilities, complete with illustrated instructions and material lists. In the fall of twenty twenty, the gallery launched the first community creation kit in partnership with the Children's Aid Society of Oxford County. This was generously sponsored by our local IPC Investment Planning Council. We were able to make thirty kits that were distributed to the clients of the Children's Aid Society of Oxford County. These kits are full of professional-grade art supplies and art exercises that are based in solid pedagogy. And can last over an extended period of creative exploration. By September, we were able to do this project again due to generous support of the Jameson Hiltz Insurance Brokers and AP Hurley Construction. And we were able then to make the kits available for sale in the gallery's gift shop by the, by late fall, late November, early December. I was able to secure sponsorship for one more iteration of this important project throughout. I was able to secure sponsorship for one more iteration of this important project through our local RBC. But honestly, funds were becoming harder to find as businesses were starting to really feel the impact of the pandemic. And I felt that sadly, after April of 2021. This important initiative that's serving some of our most at-risk youths would have, would have run its course. But I'm thrilled to let you know that we received support through the Oxford Community Foundation Emergency Community Support Funding. That now will allow us to offer this very important program for a full year. Increase the number of kits from 30 to 50. And this means that the gallery is now able to service 200 additional disadvantaged families and children in our community. With an added value of $5,000 of arts supplies. And arguably, a lifetime of creative problem solving skills development. Before I move on in the presentation, I wanted to mention two of my staff. On the left, you see Robin DeAngelis, our Cultural Communications Coordinator. And on the right is Deanna Logan, our Education Coordinator. Both of them were selected as delegates for the Fast Forward 2020. This was a youth summit hosted by the Community Foundations of Canada and RBC. And this was a tremendous opportunity for these two rising stars in our community. Robin was given the responsibility to take over the Community of Foundations Instagram account. And over the last two, these, over the last year, these two have been in the driving seat at the gallery. And this shift from virtual programming so quickly and so swiftly. Is due in large credit to these two extraordinary women. The two other core functions of the Woodstock Art Gallery are exhibitions and the permanent collection. Exhibitions are programmed throughout the year to provide a balance of historical and contemporary work. As work, as well as work done by local artists and those that are recognized on the national and international art scene. Exhibition themes are intended to be reflective of current trends and conversations. Along with making key links in the, in the Ontario school curriculum. Due to COVID, the gallery's exhibition schedule has been in a constant flux. Due to the lockdowns and severe reduction in in-person visitors. The gallery exhibitions have been extended to much longer runs and rescheduled into 2021 and 2022. And as you can appreciate, we try to show as much of the collection, our exhibition line, in our exhibition lineup as possible. And really want to highlight these treasures to our community. Last year, we were able to feature 132 works from the collection in four exhibitions. One exhibition I'm particularly proud of is the Given Her Due: Oxford County Women Artists from 1880 to 1980. This exhibition traced the many of the connections between women artists in our community over 100 years. And highlighted some really wonderful unsung talents. I'd also like to mention, I hope I went ahead a bit. I'd also like to mention, we welcomed our new team member in October of 2020. Nell Wheel is our new Head of Collections. And has already proven to be a very important asset to the, to the gallery. The permanent collection is actually collectively owned by the citizens of Woodstock, and the gallery is the steward of this important resource. The collection reflects the history and nature of Oxford County with a focus on local artists, in particular Florence Carlyle. I just wanted to highlight this one painting by Florence Carlyle, which is a portrait of her mother. Holding a copy of The Studio, which is an Arts and Letters publication of the time. The National Gallery of Canada has in fact borrowed this, this work from our collection. For its exhibition, Canada and Impressionism. And then it has been on an international tour and is now back in Canada and will be on display in Ottawa in 2022. Also of note is the Woodstock Art Gallery organized traveling exhibition, Many Lives Mark This Place. John Hartman paints Canadian writers in the landscapes that inspire them. This exhibition opened at the McMichael Canadian Art Collection in March of 2020. And it is currently in storage and will relaunch its international tour this fall. Things to highlight in the 2021 revenue budget that are on the positive side. Is that the gallery received a number of grants in 2020 that could not be expended. And as such, these amounts are already secured and have been carried over to 2021. In addition, we are not, we were not able to complete our projects in 2020, 2020, such as the logo competition. And their strategic spans, strategic plan. So again, these funds have been carried over as well. On the downside, our abilities to self-generate revenue have been severely compromised due to the pandemic. The estimates provided in the 2021 budget are based on a reduction of participation rates. Rates and are contingent on a number of unpredictable and unknown future realities. I'd also like to draw your attention to a few areas on the expense side. Our full-time salaries have increased due to the facility's maintenance position no longer being shared with the museum. The professional development budget has been pared down significantly as travel will not be undertaken. I also look to find areas that we could reduce costs in terms of general overall operation expenses. And this has been reflected in many budget lines. And I've tried to maintain as much as we can for our public program activities that are now being transitioned online. However, a number of programs will just not run this year. These include our bus tour, our film service series, as well as our signature fundraiser, the Taste of Art event. But the hardest hit is the exhibition's budget due to the increase, the decrease in in-person visits. But before I leave you, I want to mention a few highlights of 2021. Knowing that we'd not be able to host our annual Creative Family Day. The gallery's education team came up with the idea of doing a smaller scaled-down version. Of the community creation kits with online activities. I reached out to Toyota Motor Manufacturing of Canada, who wonderfully shared our vision and funded this project. We plan to give away 300 art grab bags, as this is what our typical in-person attendance is in years past. But we didn't anticipate how huge this demand was for this activity. So many people lined up to collect these bags before 11:00 AM on Friday, February the 12th, that they were gone in almost 10 minutes. And before knowing what, how much demand there was going to be for our little art grab bags. The library reached out to partner on a project called Art of Stories: Inspirations of Our Favorite Books. The gallery will contribute our art bags and activity, and the library will create the additional programming and a virtual exhibition. And this will roll out in the, in the coming months. The Oxford Community Foundation has graciously, graciously agreed to direct funds from the Emergency Community Support Funding to support this program. Another exciting initiative for 2021 is that young artists will have the opportunity to showcase their talents in an online exhibition. Students in, from grades nine to 12, who live or study in Oxford County. Are invited to submit their artwork to this new project called New Impressions: High School Juried Exhibition. The call is currently open, and the exhibition will launch in April with a special virtual event on May 26. And we are very thankful of the support provided by DJ Design and the media sponsorship by Hard FM. The gallery is also looking to get a new look. We launched our logo competition at the end of 2020. The three logos that you see here are the shortlist finalists. And they are currently open for the public's feedback. And the new logo will be unveiled in the fall of 2021. And another banner project for the summer of 2021 is the annual juried exhibition. This year, Visual Element 63 is intended to be both online and in the gallery. And again, the Oxford Community Foundation has kindly funded this exhibition through the Georges and McElroy Funds. We are small, but we are mighty, and I want to acknowledge the gallery's incredible staff. Which includes those already mentioned, as well as Stephanie Porter, Head of Education. Sarah Cuthbert, Gallery Operations Coordinator, and Kellen Hodgins, our Facilities Maintenance. All of these successes are shared collectively, and it is a privilege and true honor to be leading this amazing team. I'd also like to thank the City of Woodstock staff from other departments who assist the gallery's operation. It's a great benefit to work with such generous colleagues who are always willing to share and help. And I want to commend the Advisory Board of the, of the Woodstock Art Gallery. For making this virtual leap with us all, and personally thank them for their commitment and dedication to this organization. To conclude this presentation, I want to leave you with a small selection of comments we received from our supporters over the last year. Keywords such as amazing leaders, appreciation, inspiring, and fun. Speak to the importance of the Woodstock Art Gallery to the citizens of Woodstock. In a recent study, a value study of GLAMs, which is short form for Gallery, Library, Archive, and Museums. In Canada, every dollar invested in art galleries, there's a social return of $4.30. And to quote a recent speech by Senator Patricia Bovee. Art empowers, art is the ability to change society, and art is the ability to question and to heal. But to do that, it needs support. I want to thank Mayor Birch and City Council for the steadfast support the gallery has received in 2020. This commitment has positioned the gallery to play an important role in assisting Woodstock's post-pandemic recovery. Many thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Questions of council? And we'll start with Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. Being a member of that board, I just want to thank Mary Reed, the staff. And all the other board members that have worked so hard to accomplish. What has been done through this stressful year, last year in COVID, through 2020. And just a big thanks to the work that they do. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Tate.
Through your worship, just to comment also, because I'm not on the board, so I'm completely unbiased. But you have done an amazing job, and I, probably the public isn't aware of everything that you've done. Considering we're in a pandemic and the amount of money that you've been able to raise when you sent that. Short email a couple of weeks ago, it was amazing the work you've done. We have, we do have amazing staff. With the city, and I'm glad everybody works together, and you need to be commended for the work that you've done. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Achioni.
Thank you, your worship. I really want to echo Counselor Tate. It's no secret I've been one of your biggest fans since you came. Was never really into the art gallery, self-admittedly. Much beforehand, got to know you, got to know all the staff there at the art gallery. And let's just say, it's no secret, my wife and I both love the event Taste of Art. And we're really, my only question here is, since you're going to miss a couple of them, we're really hoping. You'll have a few extras in a couple of years. So that, you know, we can enjoy them more. Just a suggestion, just throwing it out there, but. You know, a regular Friday night thing is not a bad, bad idea. Just saying. Thank you for you and your staff. All kidding aside, just keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship through to Mary. I just want to commend you and the staff on how well you adapted to the pandemic. The, I was on the website not that long ago and just looking over it again and how you. Changed everything to virtual. Is very creative and all the, the programming and, and things you've done. And in one of your comments, and I actually was looking at the page where the puzzles are. I love doing puzzles as well, but it's very hard in these times and to react quickly. But you guys were on top of things and I've done an amazing job. And I think as a community, we should be very proud of all the accomplishments that you and the staff have done.
Many thanks.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. And we'll move right along. We have the Public Library 2021 Budget, and we have Chair of the Library Board, Ken Whiteford. Those who've been watching this meeting since the beginning might recognize him from the previous presentation. We're also joined by our Library CEO, David Harvey. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon again. I want to start this presentation by paying tribute to. The staff of the library for how they've handled the changes that have occurred over the course of 2020. Unlike some services that the city deals with. Where you can simply implement certain protocols and carry on with, with your operations. The library has been faced with a real roller coaster of change. Brought about by, by the pandemic. We've found ourselves having to change procedures and revamping procedures. Sometimes two to three times a month, just to, to keep up with what the province and the region. Regional situation was in the various color codes or during the lockdown that we've experienced. The board has also experienced change. Over the course of 2020, council may be aware that. Vanessa Vogel, one of the representatives that was appointed by council at the end of, or at the end of 2018. Did resign from the board in September due to a move outside of the city. And City Council then appointed Gary Wade. As the replacement for Vanessa, and Gary has been a very supportive new member of the. Board, and we're very pleased to have him on board. The council will also be aware that Ross Jerry, our Vice Chair, has been on leave of absence. And so we've been basically a six-member board for the last few months. And just a reminder, the other members of the board, the mayor is, is on the board, as well as counselors. Tate and Lauder, and Mary Ann Silverthorne, who I mentioned earlier. Turning to 2021. The board objective is to continue to work on implementing our strategic plan or five-year plan. We're kind of midway through that, through that time period. We hope to better respond to the needs of our users, especially, we're hoping to see a lot of them back. Physically in the building during the course of 2021. And we want to focus on a key strategic priority relating to the. Undertaking of an expansion plan study for the library facility itself. We're a growing community, and we're going to have to address the fact that the library needs to, to keep up with that growth. From the standpoint of the budget. We're in what I would call a transition year, and I think we're bringing forth essentially a status quo budget. We do need to address the contractual obligations that we have with our valuable staff. We need to continue with dealing with COVID-related costs. And we have some IT projects, new ones that need to be implemented during the course of the next 12 months. Or what amounts to 10 months now. So with that, with those comments, I'm going to turn things over to our CEO, David Harvey. And David will summarize the budget and explain what it entails. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So some numbers from 2020 Year in Review for the council. Despite one full shutdown of the building, despite having laid off half of our staff. Despite other lockdowns, move from curbside service back into the building and then back to curbside. And despite the fact that we had the quarantine items upon return. Last year, we had 1.5 million library uses, which is quite a success. And that is really due to the work of staff being able to pivot. And change to meet the challenges that COVID-19 has brought about. So that's, of course, down from the previous year of 1.9 million library uses. So you can see, we didn't, it was very good here, relatively speaking. Last year, we saw 273,280 items were borrowed. Through 121, 409 visits. Now, most of those were curbside visits. So once again, people, the public, our community. Love the library and used it even during the pandemic shutdown and lockdown. There were 355,749 social engagements. And that was up from the previous year 35%. So our, our Facebook, our Twitter, our social media channels. Were, became the main point of contact for many of our patrons. There were 8,874 program attendants. Now, of course, we weren't doing any in-person programming because the building's been shut. So these were all done via Zoom or YouTube. And these were things like storytimes for, for kids. And Pub Trivia Night was moved to a digital platform using a, a platform called Kahoots. So that is quite success. That's, that's 450 to 600 people per month attending those digital programs. Which is quite a success. And we saw a 26% increase in the use of our digital collections, those being our eBooks. Our download audio files, our audiobooks, downloadable comics, and our free music downloads. We did accomplish a couple capital projects last year. We did get to install a adult change station in the family washroom. And we were able to also install two self-check kiosks last year. Luckily, we had ordered them in January. They didn't really go on to service until mid-year, I believe. But it was pretty much a godsend for patrons who wanted to limit their personal contact with others. And they could use these kiosks. Kiosks to check out books by themselves. So as the board chairs mentioned earlier, um, the library board's requesting a, a status quo budget for 2021. Now, there are certain assumptions that were made in the um, development of this budget. So based on past experience, we, we feel we can expect the following. More lockdowns and closures of the library. Uh, this may be in relationship to a, a third wave. Uh, there will be continued restrictions on the use of our collection and access to the building. As I mentioned earlier, we are uh, quarantining all returned library materials for a period of six days. Uh, before they go back out and are once again available to uh, the public. And we're maintaining um, software distancing within the library um, and, and face masks as required by the province. We expect to see um, reduced levels of revenues from fines and fees, those being overdue fines. Um, replacement fees for damaged and lost materials and room rentals. We assume that there's gonna be no in-person physical programming in the library in 2021. We're also expecting continued disruptions in the publishing and printing industry. Um, there were one large printing company went out of business during last year. Um, there are been delays in the publishing of bestsellers and the release dates. So all these things have an impact on us and, and trying to get items for people that are in demand. Then we foresee, of course, the continued use of, of personal protective equipment and social distancing till the end of um, 2021. So there's gonna be a need to provide, of course, our collection services and programs in, in digital formats continuing. As we've been doing, I mentioned a few earlier on, our, some of our children's reading clubs are now have been moved to a digital platform called Beanstalk. Um, and we're, we're actually even doing travel logs um, via YouTube. And we will continue to improve our offerings and our e-collections uh, uh, such as uh, digital books, eBooks. And uh, downloadable audiobooks. We expect a slow return to pre-COVID library usage levels. It's just gonna be a matter of comfort level. Um, so we want to ensure that people understand that we're a safe space to come. And we're taking the required requirements to protect both uh, patrons and staff. And we also expect municipal revenues to, to be under-stressed. So the library board approved the status quo budget for 2021, given the ongoing certainty surrounding COVID-19. There are three main drivers to the library budget for 2021. Those being contractual obligations, COVID-19-related costs and city IT projects. So under contractual obligations, um, there's staff pay increases and of course with a collective agreement. Um, benefits increases, hydro, et cetera. Um, we do note that we will be negotiating collective agreement with our union, uh, unionized workers um, this year. There are COVID-related costs and actually savings. Um, so we will be spending more, of course, on protective, uh, personal protective equipment. For staff, um, those being gloves, um, masks, et cetera. Um, we are spending more on cleaning supplies and we're, we're spending more on um, better filtration. Um, for the uh, heating, ventilation and air conditioning unit. And that's gonna be about $6,000, an increase. Um, we're also expecting, I said, I mentioned earlier, a loss of fines and fees, uh, which we're gonna, I'm estimating about $14,500. Uh, there will be, of course, savings on, on travel and attendance of conferences and programming supply costs because we're not doing in, in-house programming. City IT projects are also a driver. Uh, we are integrated with city IT's network and systems. So the city has um, taken on projects to um, improve their network and uh, infrastructure. Um, but so our share will be $15,000. Um, there's a office 360 implementation for the library. In joint with the city, which is gonna cost over $5,000 and a new phone system. Uh, which once again will cost us about $8,000. So total expenditures for 2021, uh, it's $2,913,660. Our total revenues, we're estimating as $325,250. So that's a net expenditure of $2,588,410. So that's uh, represents a 2.26% increase over the previous year. So our focus in 2021 this year will be to continue to adapt to uh, COVID-19 and to provide the best possible library services as we can. And once again, I'd like to recognize the efforts of our staff to be uh, so flexible and dedicated and then serving our community. Uh, we will complete the 2020 outstanding uh, projects, uh, one of which is the building expansion feasibility study. And um, we will conduct a diversity and inclusion review of all library services. So with that, I'd like to take any questions and thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? And uh, I'll just ask you to. Stop sharing that screen and then we'll see all of the counselors uh, up at once. There we go, Counselor Tate.
Uh, thank you, worship through, worship to um. The presentation, just a comment once again. Um, I know we've commented before about what our staff have been through with the pandemic. But this is the first time you've been here, so I think we need to um, pass that along that um. City council and the board are very supportive of what's gone on and we appreciate all the work. And what has um, what the staff had gone on through during the pandemic. It's been very stressful and they've all adapted well and I. They need to know they have our full support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. I am, let's comment through to Mr. Harvey also through the mayor. Um, I, I also want to thank um, David Harvey and his staff uh, for the amazing way they've handled. Uh, dealing with the operations while working through these stressful times. Uh, throughout 2020 and I'm sure there'll be a lot more in 2021. And many citizens, people I've talked to, uh, just have looked so forward to being able to get back into the. Library and pick out their books. It's great to have the curb service. It's been wonderful for them. Um, but it's a nice to get in and pick your own uh, books and it'll be great to be able to participate. In the programs offered in the future. So uh, thank you again for all your hard work and the staff.
Thank you, Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, worship and uh, through to Mr. Whiteford and to Mr. Harvey. By not being a member of the library board, but I just want to say what a fine job. The board has done and what a fine job you've done with your staff, Mr. Harvey. And uh, doing uh, such difficult times and you only be here for a short period of time. Uh, you've done an amazing job, just like the art gallery, uh, staff. You've adapted so well and uh. You make uh, you make our system, us, us, the population in this council proud of our, our systems here. Of our art gallery, of our library and keep up the good work and please pass on to your staff. This council appreciates their efforts and their hard work uh, greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship through to uh, Mr. Harvey. Um, I fail to uh, recognize the board at the art gallery, but um. At the board of the library as well as you, um, same kind of um, comments. Um, you guys have really uh, adapted in a, a really hard environment. And um, going forward, you um, you know, um. You guys are doing a great job and as everybody has stated, we're very proud of all the people we have working. Uh, for the city and I know that the city appreciates all the efforts that have been going on. So continue with the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Acioli.
Yeah, thank you, worship through to Mr. Harvey. Um, again, I, I don't want to repeat everybody, but thank you very much, you and your staff. And it's just been amazing at how many people have actually asked me. I'm sure other counselors have experienced it. But have asked, when is a library gonna be back opened up? So it's really an eye-opener of how many people do rely on the services you provide. So. Keep up doing a good work, keep it safe and hopefully we can open things up as soon as possible. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none. And uh, that's it for our presentations today. Uh, now, all of those items will be uh, dealt with at our next regular meeting of council as we uh. Finalize uh, the 2021 budget. Now, next up, we have the administrative services. So first one is the expense. Included in the preliminary revenue fund budget. So this is all that fancy accounting about depreciation and. And uh, liabilities on the balance sheet that our treasury department takes care of, looking for a mover. And we'll go Counselor Lauder in a seconder. Uh, we'll go with Counselor Fraser. Go ahead.
That Woodstock City Council adopts the report regarding the exclusion of post-retirement and amortization expenses from. The 2021 Revenue Fund Budget.
Thank you. Uh, discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have a opportunity to submit an application to the. Government regarding the modernization grant. Uh, Counselor Tate and a seconder, Counselor Schattenberg.
I'll move the motion that Woodstock City Council authorized staff to submit an application for the monetization grant intake two in the amount of 74,000. For software improvements as outlined in the report.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And uh, hopefully we hear back favorably in that. It will uh, help with. Some of the items we have budgeted in our draft budget. Next item is the uh, agreement for the Woodstock Cricket Club. Looking for a mover, uh, Counselor Acioli and a seconder, Counselor Schattenberg. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. I'm actually gonna change things up that I'd like Woodstock City Council to bring a report to council. For the Woodstock Cricket Cub Club and look at all feasibilities.
So to have, we'll just repeat that. So to have staff bring a report, another report?
Uh, yes. I really hope and that somebody will agree just to open up conversation on it, of course. But yeah, looking to bring another report, um. I still think there's more uh. More to do between the two parties. So bring a report to council over the Woodstocks Cricket Club.
Okay. And is there a seconder on that motion? Counselor Schattenberg, discussion? And we'll start with Counselor Acioli.
Thank you. Yeah, I do appreciate the report and everything that's in there now. Uh, I guess I'm just not fully satisfied to try to come to an understanding with such a long. Organization, long time. And I was wondering if Mr. Connors could, uh, would be willing to speak to it.
Uh, you worship through to the counselor's question. Um, the reason I brought this uh, report forward, um. And uh, believe that uh, the agreement is not in the best interest of um. Uh, the citizens of uh, Woodstock is that um, the agreement uh, as it stands currently. Um, allows for just really one uh, club or one group to um, book the fields. And um, all other clubs are not allowed to, really. In the past, they, they booked the fields and um, we were able to put in uh, another club. During times that they didn't book. Um, however, last year and I, I believe going forward. Um, this club will now book all the times completely, even when they're not playing. So what this does is it uh, effectively shuts out people from playing and being active. So um, I really believe that um. Following all, almost all of our other sports clubs where we allocate fields. That's the, the route to go to maximize the usage of the cricket pitch. And um, I believe cricket is a growing sport in uh, Woodstock. And um, I think this problem will just at, um, be it uh, become larger and larger as time goes on if we keep. To the same agreement.
Yep, you can keep going.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Okay, and I guess initially understood your report completely and. Then I got thinking of the soccer club. Now, forgetting the issues we ended up having with the soccer club, but. It, it was fairly successful for a number of years, of course, organizing. Um, am I wrong in thinking of the cricket club similar to how the Woodstock Soccer Club did it for a number of years and booking their fields? And everything else, I know, on the Rome?
Uh, you worship through to the counselor's question. Uh, the uh, in this agreement, the uh, cricket club looked after the cricket pitch. Um, and as you can see by the pictures that were, it's, it's quite dilapidated and definitely in need of renewal. Um, where this, and the city just cuts the, the grass. But this, there is some similarities between the soccer club three years ago, um, where they had complete control of the bookings and. Other groups got shut out. And now that the city's doing it, you're seeing more groups come in. Um, just like nine years ago, uh, Minor Ball was booking out some of our ball diamonds. They, they were, you were actually calling Minor Ball rather than the city if you wanted to book out country. Um, that got changed. Those were all difficult discussions, much like this has been. Uh, but in the end, uh, the benefit goes out to the wider citizens. Um, in the form that they can access these recreation facilities.
I'm gonna continue if I may, your worship. So i- is there, yeah, is there um. Is there an agreement there, do you feel, between the city as well as the Woodstock Cr- Cricket Club that would benefit? Uh, not only the citizens, but also kind of pay respect to what the cricket club has done for the city? I- is there any other form? That you can imagine?
You, you worship through to the uh, counselor's question. I, I believe there's a fundamental difference. Um, the Woodstock Cricket Club sees themselves as a private. Club. Um, so they pick who plays cricket and who doesn't and when. Um, this is at odds, um, fundamentally with what a municipality would like to see in its park and on its sports fields. Um, we want to see as many people play as much as possible. Now, a- as far as um. The Woodstock Cricket Club, if they go through the affiliation process, um. They will be able to book and, you know, um, play cricket, just like they did last year and the year before. Um, so there won't be um, that much difference. The, the difference is they'd need to go through the affiliation process, which is a process that. You know, um, 60% of their uh, people need to be Woodstock citizens. Um, they uh, we need to look at their constitution to make sure there's no discrimination. And um, we'd make sure that from a financial uh, perspective. Um, then the club isn't masquerading as a for-profit business in a not-for-profit status. So those, i- if you can meet those three things, you can obtain affiliate status with the, the city. And book the fields. Now, if you can't or choose not to, you don't have to go through that. It's just a different rate. And the rates um, are quite, quite affordable. There are $4.60 per hour. Um, for an affiliate group and $9.05 per hour um, for a non-affiliate group. So. Not, not a lot um, uh, per hour on, on these fees.
Yeah. So for people at home, for the financial implications, it, it's not that the city's looking for a lot. Of money, if I want to be clear, it's just simply for, to grow the sport and to maintain the fields.
You worship through to the counselor's question.
Yeah, yeah.
This is not a uh, growing the revenues. In, in fact, uh, the city uh. Is looking at redoing the cricket pitch at a, a cost of $30,000. So this isn't a, a definitely. So this isn't a, definitely not a revenue piece. This is something that will hopefully allow more people in the city to play cricket should they choose.
Thank you. And we'll go first with Counselor Schattenberg.
Thanks, Ken. The mayor through to Brian Connors. Just as a guess, a clarification too for the public. The actual club hoax that's there next to the cricket pitch. Who would have possession of any of the, of the use of that without go along with whoever's got the rental of the field at that point in time?
You worship through to the counselor's question. We believe that would be the case. That when you're renting out the building, you would use it for the day. And that you would get that as long as you're renting the field. But you'd need to clean it up and clear it out afterwards. And we would have staff come in before and after to check to make sure that, that that is happening. If we found abuses, that, that would be a different story, but that's, that's what we would do.
And, and as a follow-up, I guess we talked about the needs assessment study for recreation facilities going on this year and the fact that you did a temporary pitch up at the St. Mary's High School, Southwood. It's called Southwood Park up there, but just it was a general idea. I mean, with the, with the, there's bureau consensus too that a second or a third cricket pitch maybe needed in the city Woodstock, but you have to go through the regular processes to determine the, the, the use needed because everyone, of course, all on prime time. In, in this case of a cricket pitch, everyone wants Saturday and Sunday afternoon and Tuesday night for practice.
I worship through to the counselor's question. Yes, we, we will be going through a rec facility need study and, you know, that will be something that determines whether we're building cricket pitches or other recreational items, just based on what the population would like to see us do next. That basically becomes the Parks and Rec Department's marching orders and then we take it up to you, counsel, to see if you, you agree with that or not.
Thank you, Counselor Tate.
Yeah, through your worship, just a comment, I'm not supporting that motion. We had a very detailed report that was very, was laid out what the issues are. I don't know what another report's going to say except for the exact same thing. We are an inclusive city and we are to include everybody. And that's the whole point of this. This was not inclusive for all the taxpayers of the city. They were being banned from using this facility and that is the reason, as noted in the report, that we had to set up a secondary location. And this has been a long history with this. I'm sure the director could let the other counselors know that weren't on counselor, council at the time. If was asked, but the city has put a lot of money into that building. And this is a little different than the soccer club because the soccer club initially were the owners of their facility and they were running it privately with help from the city, but they were the owners of it. This is, this is city property and we are an inclusive city. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And opposed? All right, that motion's defeated. Another motion? We'll go Counselor Fraser, second by Counselor Tate.
Uh, that Woodstock City Council declines to renew their agreement with the Woodstock Cricket Club.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Tate.
Yeah, just through your worship, just so the public is aware, they are still allowed to use the cricket club. The whole point is they don't have the sole control of it, but they can still use it just like everybody else. So just, I don't want it to look like we're not allowing them, but they're going to have to go through the same process as everybody else.
Thank you, Counselor Schattenberg.
Thanks, I guess I direct this question to Mr. Connors again. The, Mr. Glasgow from the Cricket Club was discussing something about a ninety-nine year lease. Does that, that actually exists, something about nineteen seventy, they built the cricket pitch or the, or the, or the wicked area for that? And, and what's sort of the story on that?
Uh, you worship through to the counselor's question. I don't have any documentation about a ninety-nine year lease. There are this lease comes due now with an option for another ten years. There was a two, uh, up to a two thousand two in our records lease for this. The, I, I don't have anything in the nineteen seventies, which Mr. Glasgow was talking about. The last I did, we do have is two thousand six, when the clubhouse was renovated. So there was a forty-five thousand dollar trillion grant and then the city, I believe the city, it looks like, were certainly the construction management, project managers. And they also put out seven thousand dollars for tapers to install the nets along the, the drive there.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Acioli?
Thank you, worship. And I do appreciate everybody having kind of the discussion there. It's just, I wanted to respect the history. Though, but I do understand from your point of view, Mr. Connors, from the city's point of view, and of course, as Counselor Tate has mentioned, for the usage of, with everybody in the city. So, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much. And our next one is the mutual support for the mass immunization clinic. Looking for a mover in a second or we'll go with Counselor Lauder and a second or Counselor Acioli. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council provide golf hall and other required spaces in kind to southwestern public health in order to help facilitate a mass immunization clinic and that a service agreement be signed to that effect.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Lauder.
Yes, um, through the mayor to Mr. Connors, could you just fill us in on the in-kind services that will be expected of the city to provide and will this cost be strictly on the citizens of Woodstock or is that the county going to be involved in this also? I do support that. I do support it. But I just would like those questions answered. Thank you.
Uh, you worship through to the counselor's question. There will be some costs that the city at present would, would bear if, if this goes through. The hall rental, we would obviously not be making any rental revenue with an in-kind donation to Southwest Public Health. There would also be custodial services that would take place an hour before and after the clinic is opened and depending on how long the clinic goes, if it goes outside of when that building is open, that would also be additional costs. There'll be some costs or potentially there might be costs for IT to be on standby. If there's ever any issues or, or problems there. And then the, the last smaller revenue impact would be, we would not run camps, obviously, out of golf hall. We'd move them to the sportsplex and then those renters would be impacted and there'd be some rental revenue impacted. But those right now for this, um, initial agreement would be the cost that we can foresee.
Continue, Counselor Lauder.
And will this, will there be any costs shared with the county? Because this is not just for the citizens of Oxford, of Woodstock, it is for Oxford County. And so I just wondered if there'd be any shares, there any talk about, any sharing with the county?
I, your worship through to the counselor's question. At this point, this has all happened extremely fast. We toured with them less than two weeks ago, the Southwest Public Health. Some of the items are still under discussion. The, I, I know Southwest Public Health has said that they're they're planning to be able to reimburse us for some of the costs. Now, it wouldn't be like an in-kind rental cost or anything like that. But there is some plans to that, but they can't guarantee it because they have to get that from the provincial government first and, and that hasn't been established.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg.
Yeah, through to Brian Connors as well. In an effort to keep people outside during, let's say, bad weather days, as we certainly do have in April and May, with a lineup, therefore be set up inside the concourse of the, of the sort of the golf hall in the, in the Southwood arenas? Or would it be the hallway, breeze away towards the Fanchow College side? Because that could close off the, 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 because of six foot distancing and whatnot, the, the viewing area from the smaller ice pad would have to be closed off as well. Has any of that been sort of looked at at this point in time?
You worship through to the counselor's question. Southwest Public Health is looking at how people are going to be entering and getting the, the vaccination and then exiting the facility. So they, they're looking at that. I know part of the, the, the process is registering people online and bringing them in smaller groups so that there's not a great big lineup for, for this. However, that's something that's really a public health piece as far as making sure people can access it safely and, and, and be inside, but also be socially distanced. We're really just facilitating the building that they want and, and they're to try to help them, you know, in any way possible, but it's, it, that would be a question for them.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And we have two items left, both public works and dealing with waste management. So the first one is the bulk item curbside collection service. Counselor Talbot and a second Counselor Fraser. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the revision to the curbside bulk item collection schedule to one pickup per cycle per year. And further, that Woodstock City Council approve the change to base budget in the two thousand twenty twenty-one revenue budget.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And the next one is the hours for the environmental depot on Saturday and having those start earlier in the morning. Looking for a mover and a second or so Counselor Acioli and second by Counselor Schattenberg. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. The Woodstock City Council received the report regarding the revision in Enviro Depot Saturday operational hours as information.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to say that I was pleased to see this report. I was in the lineup at the Enviro Depot a couple of weeks ago and I think there was nineteen cars in front of me. That was at a ten o'clock opening and it only took ten minutes for the nineteen cars to be processed. So it was very efficient, but I think that, you know, people get up on the weekend and they've collected all week and they want to get rid of the stuff. So I think that this will be a welcome change to, to the residents so that they can carry on with the rest of their day and not have to wait until the later hour.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And we don't have any bylaws today. So we'll start our questions and addresses with Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, worship, and I'll just pass today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg.
I'll pass as well.
Thank you. Counselor Acioli.
Thank you, worship. I'll be brief. Just want to tell everybody, just, weather's changing, keep that in mind, but don't be fooled. We can still get some bad weather. Kind of slide in between some of these really warm days. So bring a jacket, get outside, enjoy, enjoy our trails and kind of thank all the staff for, I see them out starting on stuff and cleaning up things already. So, um, big thank you and that's all for today. Thank you. And be safe.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll go Counselor Talbot.
Uh, the only thing I have to say, worship, is enjoy some of the warm temperatures that we have coming. Other than that, I'll pass.
Thank you. Counselor Tate.
I just want to use my short time just to thank the staff once again. Now that we've had all the budget presentations, I know I say this every year, but we have amazing staff at the city. They do a great job behind the scenes. We've had a couple go through some terrible family tragedies and they still did their job. You wouldn't even know behind the scenes what was going on. They've done fantastic jobs. I just want to thank everybody for the work that they put into it and thanks again.
Thank you. Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. Um, I just want to report that since I am an essential worker for caregiver for my brother, I received my vaccine for COVID on Saturday and it was in London and everything just was so organized. And there wasn't big lineups. You had a time slot and you had to be there and it went, went through very quickly. So when you're offered to have that vaccine, please get out there and think seriously. We've got to try and fight this COVID some way and the needle doesn't hurt. So just, and I hate needles. So, um, that's all. Just keep safe. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and I, I want to again say thank you to staff and I, I, I look at the dates and time we're in right now. Our, our next meeting is March eighteenth. I might say something similar at that meeting. It would be after the one-year anniversary. What I'm saying now is just slightly ahead of that. It was about this time last year. I remember having a meeting here at City Hall. We had all of our senior management team here at City Hall on a Sunday prior to March break. And with all the information that had been gathered, and this was ahead of any other announcements from any cities in Ontario or the provincial or federal government, we made the decision to cancel the programming and the facilities for March break and moving forward. So you know, I think being proactive that way, it shows the dedication that our team has here and the confidence that they receive from council. So again, just want to thank them for all the hard work. We're coming up to our one-year anniversary of the, the two weeks to flatten the curve. Now, stay up to date with the what's on Woodstock magazine. I, I have some information that I put in the, the mayor's message this month. If you know anybody who is going through difficult times right now, like we heard in some of the earlier presentations, especially the one from our police chief, make sure you reach out to them. There's a lot of people who, this is dragging on pretty hard. There's mental health issues and substance issues and other things that are the collateral damage of what we've been going through. So remember the resources that are available. You can always call two-one-one, which has all the information for all services for all levels of government. And a reminder for all things mental health, for those that are under nineteen years of age, it is our welcome, is our lead agency there. And of course, CMHA for everyone over age nineteen. And just one reminder to council, when we conclude this meeting, we'll go back in on that closed meeting with the link that's been provided. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. And I have Counselor Fraser, second by Counselor Acioli.